The Coram is present and we will move on to the minutes for July 1. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor LaTiri, seconded by Councilor Devento. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nill. We had a public hearing on the zoning bylaws for the Center Business District at the last meeting, which we can add continued to this meeting. Is there anybody who would like to have any input, positive or negative, on the Center Business District zoning proposal? If not, we'll close that hearing and move on to public comment. Mr. Cattell Meano.
Thank you, Detective President. John Cattell Meano, precinct five, the premier precinct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Did want to commend the Public Works Department for the great work they're doing in replacing that very loud gas main down in our neighborhood. It's been a complex project, but they've handled it quite well. The police department worked in detail to represent that too, so that people can see the situation in a disruptive manner without pulling the minimum. So we treat public work and police as one of their goals. For this, I would like to address, though, one of the issues, listed under new business. Now, I don't know if this is the exact, the best place on the agenda to do that or not, whatever.
Yeah, this is the best part. This is the good spot to address.
Thank you. The specific item that I would like to address under new business is the comments we got in the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Atlantis Marina application. I received a copy on the public notice from the Army Corps of Engineers asking for public comments before the end of this month. I personally would like to recommend that this council not approve the request by the Army Corps of Engineers that they're asking for right now. Basically, to put it mildly, an attempt by the Army Corps to gloss over many past deficiencies in terms of lack of adequate permitting for this particular site. And I would specifically request that the council go on record with a message to the Army Corps of Engineers to, to that effect. It's a very serious issue and one of the, for example, portions of the Army Corps of Engineers have noticed that in several quarters, it's seven foot pay, for example, that portions of this facility, the Atlantis Marina facility, have been previously permitted, but it doesn't say which portion. That needs to be, I think, somewhat detailed. In the past, for example, back in 2004, over a decade ago when the project was in its insipid stages, the Army Corps sent the owner of the site. He noticed that a major portion of the marina work underway at that time was not properly permitted or licensed by the Army Corps. And that is still a major portion of the work that was completed without proper licensing and permitting. Also, there have been a number of incidents on this site that have a significant negative environmental impact on the, not only the site, but the, but the town as a whole. For example, the, there is, I have a copy of an incident report from the Harbor Masters Department, for example, in Wood, and they did a great job, a few months ago, pointing to a citizen complained of what was observed as open sewage flow from one of the vessels, one of the new vessels, at the new, at the expanded marina that pouring sewage right, right, right into the water in the Atlantis Marina area. This is documented and verified by the, by the Harbor Masters, I have a copy of that. Incident report. Also, the, a report, for example, from the Division of Marine Fisheries with respect to this site and, they specifically say, for example, that due to the operation, oh, sorry, due to the expansion of the marina, marine fisheries may need to reclassify the buffer zone around the marina, possibly reducing the available area in times for shell fishing and adjacent flats, i.e. the, the clam flats and everything else around the Atlantis Marina might have to be reduced because of the potential for, you know, for pollutants entering the water at that point. It also, for example, states, this is in the Division of Marine Fisheries, increases in marine use often result in increases in fecal coliforms, not only for the site, but in general. A few months ago, there was a DEP hearing on this, on this issue, which is essentially the issue. And at that time, a number of us, including myself and friends of Belvedere Lodge, went on record and recommended to the DEP as a part of, the DEP is record for this particular site, which is still open, DEP has not yet gotten back to the town. And we went on record as saying that all the work that has been done should, should not be permitted, should not be granted any kind of a grandfather clause. In fact, if you look at the title of the, of the Army Corps of Engineers document, President, it sort of speaks for itself. It says that this is a request for after the fact permit application. I'm not a lawyer, but even I can read between the lines of that much to what that means. A lot of work has been done of questionable legality, if you will, and they're looking to essentially exonerate all the work that has been done and to validate. I think that would set up a terrible precedent, a terrible, a terrible precedent for the town, that way, not only for this site, but for any, anyone else in the town that might have some eyes to do something like this. We, I went on record and recommended, for example, that the existing, you know, work that has been done should be removed. And the friends of Belvedere Lodge went on record at the same time, saying the, saying that, and that's exactly what I'd like, what I would like to recommend to the town council at this point in making that kind of a recommendation to the Army Corps of Engineers. Sorry for taking up so much time.
No, that's no problem. I think we have everything, except I'm not sure we have that Harbor Masters incident report. So if you could just email that to me or give me a copy.
Well, I'll give you a copy right now, Mr. President, and I'll email copies as well, just on the safe side.
Okay. And it would, I think it would be advisable for you as well to, to send comments.
Yes. That's the point.
John, would you email the council?
What?
Would you send that to the whole council?
Yes, of course I will, yes. Thank you.
Everything that you've mentioned in there is pretty much in our draft, but I'm just not sure that this particular, yes, it is, but I'll redo it.
Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you, we got very tight.
Any further public comment?
Yes, I'm David Kelston from 550 Close and Street. I support everything Mr. Cattell Meano is saying.
We have to do precinct, is it, one, two?
Two. And if I could sit here, I just want to read a few letters and hand copies of these to the members of the council. First, the trustees of the Atlantis condominium have written a letter to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers opposing their request, and I'd like to read this letter into the record and then hand copies to.
It's already been circulated to the council, but if you want to read it again.
Okay. It's addressed to Mr. Cattell of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. It's from our property manager, who writes, "I write in response to the public notice of July 1, 2014, on behalf of the trustees of the residence at Atlantis Marina Condominium. Applicant Atlantis Marina Dock LLC's premises are within the condominium. They are part of our condominium. The trustees respectfully urge that the Army Corps of Engineers not approve applicant Marina Dock's permit application and that the Corps take no action that could be construed to interfere with the town of Winthrop's ability to regulate the marine in question until and unless the marina's operations are determined to be in conformity with Winthrop Town Law. As shown in the attached December 10, 2013, letter from Winthrop's Town Council, Copeland and Page, P.C., and in the Winthrop Building Department Cease and Desist Letter of December 12, 2013, the marina's operations are currently in violation of Winthrop law and the matters identified in the attached letters have not been addressed by applicant Marina Dock. The trustees understand that the town of Winthrop has stated its intent to file a lawsuit to remedy the marina's violations of local law. See the attached email. We must all adhere to the law and respect the rules and discretionary benefits should not be extended to those who have not done so. This is on behalf of all the trustees of our condominium." Our trustees are trying to do the good citizens. We are trying to adhere to the law and, of course, the council to adhere to the law. We are not able to file a lawsuit to stop what's going on at Marina. We don't have standing to enforce town law, but we hope that the town itself will enforce the cease and desist order and the determination that the marina operations are generally in violation of Winthrop zoning law. And, Mr. President, you have this letter and this attached?
I do, yes.
Okay. I would note that earlier to the DEP, President Gill, you wrote a letter, I'm just going to read one brief part of it. Based on the above and the testimony presented at the public hearing, including the opinion that this project is no longer an emergency, that the alleged emergency was temporary and has been alleviated, I urge that the DEP not grant a license for this project as presented unless and until all zoning health and safety issues are addressed and approved by local Winthrop boards and authorities. They haven't been addressed yet. The same issues as before DEP as raised by the Army Corps of Engineers. I note that Council Neil wrote a similar letter and Mr. Cattell Meano wrote a similar letter. And finally, if it's not in the record, I would like to put in the record a letter from one of our residences, our residents who's been active in this matter, Deborah Kuhn, her lengthy letter with many attachments to Mr. Cattell of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We will be submitting a number of additional letters opposing this application. As I read this application, I'll just make, does the council have this letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything that you wanted to put into the record, even though I have it, just give it to Denise and then.
Okay.
But if, are those are multiple copies of the same thing?
Multiple copies of the same thing.
Okay, so we just need the one from the record.
Okay. And here's the trustee's letter. I'm trying to get information from the Army Corps of Engineers as to the timing of this application. Why does it come up now after the council has said it's going to take action? The timing is suspicious. I got minimum information from them and had to file a Freedom of Information Act request, which I did, which hasn't been responded to. But I note that there's something new in this application we've never seen in any other application, the application to DEP or the Conservation Commission. Now they are saying there will be 15 vessels with year-round occupants at the marina. Whether we want the House votes or not, this seems to me to be an attempt by the applicant to do an end run around this council on the enforcement of its rules. This is the first time there's been this sort of explicit reference in any sort of permit application. And if you look at the application materials to the Army Corps of Engineers, they don't mention that in fact. So there've been ex parte or private communications between the applicant and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which haven't been made public and will, but can win my Freedom of Information Act, is, is responded to, my request is responded to. On behalf of the trustees and residents at our condominium, respectfully request that you notify the Army Corps of Engineers, your opposition to this plan, you notify them of the council's attempt to take action to enforce its law. And I think that you might also ask for a public hearing, which there are many issues of interest to the public. The Army Corps of Engineers appears to be reluctant to have a public hearing. They don't do it as a matter of right. They don't inform the butters as a matter of right. But they do say that they welcome the public hearing if there appears to be need for it, and this is certainly a matter of public interest. Thank you very much.
David, the second item, you had to include the opposition and request a public hearing. What was the second piece? You had, you had three things you wanted to, was to include. One was the opposition.
Right.
The second one I didn't catch, and the third one was the public hearing.
Well, I've forgotten, I've forgotten what the second one was. I was speaking extemporaneously, but.
I'm sure it's in there.
I, I, I think you might, you might indicate that this, that this appears to be an attempt to interfere with the jurisdiction of the town, to enforce its own rules and make its own regulations.
Yep.
Control its waterways and control its, its land connected to the waterways.
Great, thank you very much, David.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Sure.
I just have to announce to the council and to the public that we've had, we've had a concern by a citizen that we have violated the open meeting law. And we, at this point, I'm going to err on the side of caution. The open meet, the new open meeting law says there will be no discussion. Public comment will be public comment. So until we hear otherwise, from now on, I'm going to not have any discussion during public comment. And in fact, I had meant to bring up later on in the meeting that I'm going to ask Copeland and Page to come here, give us an open session presentation on the open meet, the new open meeting law. And that's, and that is because we've had a question as to the propriety of my and the councils and other community boards violating the open meeting law. So I'm going to err on the side of caution and leave it that we have no discussion. Sorry.
Councilor Neil, I'd be happy to talk with you after the meeting.
So let me, let me put it in a different way. Would it be appro, is it appropriate for me to ask whether or not the condominium association has filed a suit for relief against the marina?
He just, David just said that they have, that they.
We have no standing to file a lawsuit to enforce town regulations, I'm an attorney.
Right, exactly.
And we, we simply can't do it. We could file a lawsuit under our condominium covenant, but it's quite.
Okay, we're not going to get into deliberation, David. I'm just going to comment. And the, the, the town has filed, is in the process of filing that lawsuit.
Just on his second point, I think it was to point out the violation notices in the response.
Thank you. Glad you were paying attention. Any further public comment? Yes, great.
I, I just, I, I understand that there've been cease and desist.
Yes, there have.
And, and what does that, what, what hap, what is the definition of a cease and desist? What does it mean, have, they cease and desist or they cease and decide not to desist?
Chief.
Cease and desist is to cease your activities of means upon the inspection services or feeling to do so, which brings us into the next stage in Superior Court, which would be an injunction against the Atlantis Marina. That is in Copeland and Page's hands, and I believe that it's directed by the town manager prior to him going to training to head in that direction. So I'll follow up on that.
That'd be great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for indulging me.
On, on the rules and ordinances, if Councilor Devento, Vice President Devento, will just give a quick overview of the zoning changes for the Center Business District.
The rules and ordinance committee met, Councilor Boncorie is on his way, and he has all the fine details. I would just say we met last night for well over two hours, had a continued meeting. So we've met a number of times, well in the range of, I guess, five to six hours minimum on this zoning. And we had some members of the planning board stop by and they individually answered questions on their own.
Stuff sure is okay.
There were some, some minor tweaks, some rem numbering of the proposed ordinance. There were no major changes, there was a few little language changes, a typo here or there, rem numbering of the ordinances to fit into our, into our bylaws. But Council Boncorie is, hopefully, will be arriving with the revised, properly numbered, corrected version.
Okay. And did you guys?
Oh, sorry.
And if Council, if anyone has anything to add.
I just wanted to add that I, I know we've said this in the past, but I really want to recognize the planning board for their efforts.
I, I am. I agree, and this was a long process that they went through, a very complete process. And I was not only impressed and pleased with the planning board, but the back and forth with rules and ordinances last night, the review of the document was, was truly impressive, and especially to see the meeting end at, after 9:30. And I really appreciate everybody's efforts in that.
And being part of the premier precinct five, as Cattell Meano said, I was excited about last night's meeting, I was there as a council person, not necessarily on the committee. But it allows an opportunity for a lot of good things to happen in the Senate District, and, and not only there, but going beyond. This was focused on the Center Business District right now. There's some large posses, posses of land there that potentially could be developed tastefully and responsibly, and a lot of good input and a lot of interest from developers coming forward. We want to see tasteful and responsible development, not only in the Center Business District, but throughout Winthrop. And I know the planning board is looking forward to working on some of the other districts and working with the council to move some other things forward, so.
And I think it achieved, it's achieving one of the goals that we had in that it's, it's making the process not easy, but simple, more direct, and it's, it's making the process, like I said, easier, more direct, but not, it's still, still maintaining the quality.
And one thing I want to ask, and we always add, say, developers, well, this will give actually the existing owners potential to do things that they may have wanted to do for a long time, just that it was, was a, would have been a long ordeal for them to do it, especially for the smallest sized building, under 5,000 square feet, they'll be able to actually maybe make some improvements and make it beneficial for them to help improve their, their business as well as the Senate District.
Good, yeah, good job. You didn't get to the limousine.
No, we tabled that because.
Yeah, you know, you had enough to do on the other one.
Goodness, dinner.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on the committee reports? If not, we'll move into the co-town managers' report. Mr. McKenna is off on a, Mr. McKenna is off on a conference, so it took two guys to replace him, Tim and Terry. And, Mr. Mail, did you have?
I was just curious who was in charge tonight.
Of what?
Tim, let's, let's, you said, you're in tonight, so I am.
All right, so if we go.
That's right. We passed the torch tomorrow night at midnight.
I was just, I, I just wanted to make sure we were listening to the right person.
Yes, we are. All right, Tim, you have three minutes.
Sure. So just a few things to update the council on. The town received Green Communities grant from the Department of Energy Resources for $235,000. It's primarily for programs within the school buildings. It includes, at the Cummings School, it includes weatherization, hot water pump, air handlers, and at the middle school, it includes an EMS, an energy management system, actually includes that at the Cummings School as well, hot water pump, and then $60,000 for a boiler for the ice rink. So kudos to Joe Demilovich for his work on this. This is, you know, we just got this word last week, so the next step is to meet with Guardian Energy and the utility company. We've got to take, take advantage of any rebates that are out there as well. So when Jim gets back, we'll work on executing. It's a two-year grant, so we have time to spend. So that's one item. Secondly, there is a motion that you'll be taking up referring to finance, hopefully later on in the meeting. It's to transfer $18,000, $18,070 from sale of land to fund some projects at the library, specifically to install automatic doors for just under $8,000, and then $8,500 for a fire panel replacement, which is badly needed over there, and then there's 10% contingency built into that. And finally, from me, just on the finances, not much to update, we're busy closing the fiscal year, and our goal is to get all the reporting into DOR by September and, and then hopefully get our free cash certified shortly thereafter. Once we submit, we're kind of at the mercy to go through and process it and notify us. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Tim. Chief?
Good evening. Just want to bring your attention, National Night Out is actually August 5th, from 5:00 to 8:00, the police headquarters there, will be blocking off the Metcalf Square area. We will have live music on the town hall, front lawn. Action ambulance is going to participate as a cosponsor along with mascot. The Fire Department is doing the fire safety, helps for our Highland Rail Estate. There's going to be a bike raffle, a brand new bike raffle for everyone that shows up and get free tickets to the Highland Rail Estate. Many other police departments are coming, Boston Police, State Police, Transit Police, the Sheriff's Department. So we're in for a very good day, there's going to be a joyous life demonstration also from the Fire Department down by the Fire Headquarters, and they'll use a surplus card that doesn't operate anymore in order to move the surplus property that is no longer functioning. It'll be a good training exercise for them. The Explorers just returned from their conference. They did extremely well. They placed second place in white collar crime. They have a first place, first place in a crime scene, and they also have a second place in another category and a fifth place. No one else in Massachusetts has ever taken back and awarded trophy except Franklin, which is the only other agency that actually has brought back awards in the national conference of Explorers. So we've had several wins over many years, and I just want to point that out, Sergeant Rogers and Lieutenant Skalba amongst all, all the other volunteers in the police department and from other police departments that helped train these explorers. It's a great program. They did very well during their, during their week-long conference. Just want to also point out there was a scam going around over the weekend for Ponzi scam, and what they were saying was they were deputy sheriffs from Suffolk County Sheriff's Department, if they didn't go down by a green dot card at CBS, that they'd come and arrest them. Again, the Sheriff's Department doesn't operate in that fashion. The transcript is, is doing a story for us to make the public aware of that. Also, another scam over the weekend with the publisher declaring, declaring those sweepstakes in which they would ask for money, $2,500 to be sent in, in order to get the million-dollar check. So we've had several residents fall for other scams over the year, so I just want to make everyone aware of that. Don't go by these cards. Don't give up your account numbers, don't give up your phone numbers, social security numbers. Several BNEs over the weekend that were solved by the detective unit, I just want to bring into your attention. One was on Bellevue, one on Main Street. The detectives were tied with the patrol force to bring one person into custody. He's now being held by the National Street Jail, so a great job. You might have heard about several BNEs. They're working to clear the other ones with the Bureau of Police Department. And the final one is a child safety money that came from Speaker's Office, initiatives, a state budget of $250,000. Myself and the superintendent of schools is working on the, what best to spend that money on. This is a one-time spending mechanism, so we will concentrate on the International Association Chief of Police survey, safety survey that was done two years ago, and all the requirements that we need to pop on, security cameras, door locks, chain and locks, remastering the, the two schools, Fort Banks and Cummings is, is our main concentration for this grant money. So again, that state delegation's working hard, we appreciate the funding.
Thank you, Chief. Acting co-town manager, Thursday through Sunday.
Thank you. Chief Flanagan is here, also has some information to add to the town manager's report.
Right, yeah, I have him on there. On the Explorers, we had them, we recognized them at the last, last year when they won the award. If it's okay with the council, I'd like to bring them in again.
Just caution, on August 5th is your next meeting?
Yeah.
Probably out during National Night Out.
We're going to have to change that.
What?
Our next meeting on August 5th, can we change that? National Night Out.
Well, we'll talk about it later on.
Okay.
Chief Flanagan, some good news.
Yes. I got a letter from the MWRA with a check on board. It was made out to Peter Gill, council president, town of Winthrop. Enclosed, please find a check in the amount of $759,902.5, which represents payment to the town fiscal year 2015 in accordance with the memorandum agreement between the town and the MWRA. The annual payment is tied to the Consumer Price Index, was up 2.7%, so the $759,902 is up from $744,491 from the previous year. It is the last payment, it's the 10th payment of the 10-year contract, so this is a negotiation.
Thank you. You wanted to mention something about the polls, Chief?
Yes, we had a meeting, all the utility companies in Malden about two weeks ago at the Malden Emergency Center. They are in town now, all of the utility companies, surveying what's left, and there's about 85 polls left, and they're just negotiating because the PLM, online management website, there's a little confusion on who's on the polls. They have to come off the polls in order, it's kind of a union thing, nobody touches anyone else's wires. We did make a list of 20 polls that we feel urgent. We got them all, just about all off the main. We got them all, just about all off the main drags. You're going to go into the Business District, Woodside and Putnam Street, the two that come down in the storm. But come August, the utility companies will come up with a plan, and they'll be working in force in Winter to continue to cut back on the polls that we do have.
Under Old Business, Council, Councilor Corey, you must have heard us talking about you.
Oh, I didn't, but that's all right.
Council Vice President, yeah.
What do you want first?
He gave a, Nick gave a quick presentation, but now we're to the point that we can do a motion.
Okay. And the...
I make a motion that we add a new chapter to the Witten Town ordinance entitled Center Business District. It'll be Chapter 17.50, Special Provisions applicable to the Center Business District. Within the Center Business District, the following provisions for site plan and design review and special permits apply. Where these provisions conflict with other sections of the Winter zoning bylaws, the provisions of this chapter shall apply. Within the Center Business District, the Planning Board shall conduct site plan and design review and shall act as the special permit granting authority for all uses authorized by special permit and designated SP in the Table of Uses. Chapter 17.50010, the Purpose Clause. The purpose of this section is to promote development in downtown Winter by encouraging the redevelopment, reuse, or renovation of properties in a manner compatible with community character, to provide for a mix of uses in the same structure or on the same lot, to manage parking requirements, to foster downtown development, and to achieve a more streamlined review, including guidance for design and site plan review. Section 17.50.020 is the applicability clause. Site plan and design review has two levels, major site plan and design review and minor site plan and design review. Subsection A is threshold for major site plan and design review. If new construction or alterations of a building has to create or result in more than 10,000 square feet gross floor area. Section 2, change of use to more than 10,000 square feet of gross floor plan area, which requires additional or more parking. Subsection B, it's a threshold for minor site plan and design review. New construction addition, this is number one, new construction addition or alteration of a building so as to create a result in between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet gross floor area. Section 2, this change of use to between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet gross floor area, which requires additional or more parking spaces. Section 3, this construction alteration or expansion of a parking lot, including changes to parking spaces, circulation aisles, driveway access, or location of landscaped areas. Section 4, this modification to site plan previously approved by the Planning Board. Section 17.50.030 is procedures. There are by right applications. When an application for a building or occupancy permit is for use available as a right-of-way in the Winter zoning law, the application will go to the building commissioner. Those of areas under 5,000 gross square feet. Section B is minor site plan and design review projects. On those, the Planning Board shall review and approve. Approve with conditions or not approve the site plan within 30 days of receipt of the site plan and all other materials as requested, as for areas between 5,000 square feet and 10,000 square feet. No building or occupancy permit shall be issued by the building inspector without (1) written notification of approval by the site plan of the Planning Board, or (2) unless 30 days elapsed from the date of the submittal of the site plan without action being taken by the Planning Board. The 30 days may be extended if the Planning Board approves a request from the applicant for an extension of time for the consideration of the plan, and this extension is sent to the building commissioner. The Planning Board will not conduct an advertised meeting on minor site plan projects, but shall invite the applicant to the meeting and shall post the agenda, which lists the site plan review as an item under review. Section C, major site plan and design review projects. The Planning Boards shall hold an advertised and notice public hearing on applications categorized as major site plan and design review. Again, that's 10, over 10,000 square feet. Applications for those as, for as-of-right projects. The hearing must be held within 45 days of receipt of all materials. Alternatively, the Planning Board shall conduct its review at a notice public meeting per minor site review plan and design review above. No building or occupancy permit shall be issued by the building commissioner, number one, without written notification of approval of the site plan by the Planning Board, or number two, unless 60 days elapsed from the date of submittal of the site plan without action by the Planning Board. The 60 days may be extended if the Planning Board approves a request from the applicant for an extension of time for the consideration of the plan, and this extension is sent to the building commissioner. Section D, special permit applications. When the proposed project requires a special permit, the Planning Board will conduct site plan and design review concurrently with the special permit public hearing, using the procedures outlined in this chapter and in Mass General Law's Chapter 48 of Special Permits. Concurrent review applies to either major or minor site plan and design review requiring a special permit. Section 17.50.040, pre-submission review. Prior to investing in detailed professional design in our engineering expertise for site plans, it is strongly encouraged that the application reviews the proposed project with the Planning Board. A preliminary concept plan, photographs, and a plot plan will assist the discussion. The submitted material must provide the Board with sufficient information about the project so they can identify issues and provide guidance. At this review, which will be included in the public notice and agenda for the Planning Board meeting, the Board may vote to waive the applicant's need to submit an application for site plan and design review. Under these provisions, or may waive certain submission requirements. Section 17.50.050 is application materials. Section A is minor site plan and design review. The following materials, unless waived by the Planning Board during pre-submission review, are required to be submitted for minor site plan and design review. The Planning Board may request additional and/or supplemental material to enable it to complete minor site plan and design review. An application is incomplete unless all requested materials are supplied or unless the Planning Board has waived the items. A plan or plans that allow for the property and project to be clearly identified and reviewed must include the following: boundary lines, dimensions, and locations of all existing and proposed structures, all easements, restrictions, and covenants, description of any proposed grade changes with existing topography, drawing of the parking lot indicating parking spaces, loading areas, access, and egress, location of signage, outdoor lighting, outdoor storage, and trash disposal areas, existing and proposed planting, landscaping, and screening, drawing of the facade of the structure with information on materials to be used. In addition, it must provide copy of any variant or special permit associated with the property or its use. Section B, major site plan and design review. The following materials, unless waived by the Planning Board during pre-submission review, are required to be submitted for major site plan and design review. The Planning Board may request additional and/or supplemental material to enable it to complete major site plan and design review. This may include a traffic study. An application is incomplete unless all requested materials are supplied. A plan or plans with the information requested above under minor site plan and design review, but also elevation and floor plans of existing and proposed buildings, calculations of floor area and outdoor area as applicable, devoted to various principal uses, calculation of parking requirements, requested parking waivers shall be noted on the parking plan. The plan shall include title block showing address, scale, north arrow, seal, and signature of the registered architect, engineer, landsurver, or landscape architect responsible for a particular component of the site plan, and a locust plan at 1-inch equals 200-feet scale showing a budding lots. Section 15.50.060, coordination with other boards. As applicable, the Planning Board shall transmit a copy of the site plan and design review application to the appropriate boards, commissions, and staff of the Town of Winter. Design standards is 17.50.070. The Planning Board shall ensure that the following criteria are met during the site plan and design review. The design standards are intended to promote quality development, emphasizing the Center Business District's pedestrian skill development patent and the desire for development that is in harmony with the existing skill enmascing in the district. Subsection A is building skill. New buildings and/or subsequent alterations shall incorporate features to add visual interest while reducing the appearance of bulk or mass. Such features shall include varied facades, roof lines, roof heights, and materials. Subsection 1, buildings shall relate to the pedestrian skill by (a) including an appropriate architectural detail to add visual interest along the ground floor of all facades that face streets, squares, pedestrian pathways, parking lots, or other significant pedestrian spaces. (b) Articulating the base, middle, and top of the facade by using corners, string corners, step backs, and other similar features. Subsection 2, continuous length of flat blank walls adjacent to streets, pedestrian pathways, or open spaces will, shall not be permitted. Subsection B, roof form. New construction shall, one, new construction shall include new development above existing buildings and/or substantial alterations, shall incorporate roof forms which will harmonize with the historic architecture of downtown Winter. Subsection 2, mechanical equipment located on roofs shall be screened, organized, and designed as a component of the roof design and not appear to be a leftover or added-on element. Section 3, C, entrances. All primary commercial and residential building entrances shall be visible from the right-of-way in the sidewalk and shall have an entrance directly accessible from the sidewalk. Section 2, where parking is located to the rear of a building, any rear entrance is to be visible and accessible from the parking lot. Directional signage to the building entrance shall be installed on all entrances to have sufficient illumination at nighttime. Section 3, doors shall not extend beyond the exterior facade into pedestrian pathways. Subsection D, external materials and appearance. Subsection 1, predominant wall material shall be a wood, brick, stone, or composite material consistent with the neighborhood and approved by the Planning Board. If painted or coated, only a non-metallic finish will be used. Cladding materials should be consistent on all facades with the exception of special design elements such as gables or dormers. Arnings and canopies shall be compatible with the architectural style of the building. Colors and patterns used for awnings and canopies shall be subdued and compatible with existing awnings on adjacent buildings. Three, except for minor trim, the building wall shall, the building shall avoid the appearance of reflective materials such as porcelain enamel or sheet metal, and window panes shall be non-reflective. Section 4, ground floor commercial building facades facing streets, squares, or other significant pedestrian spaces shall contain transparent windows encompassing a minimum of 40% of the facade surface unless waived by the Planning Board.
Would you like a break and read a few pages?
You can read. Subsection E.
I think I hit the second. Just correct me if I miss anything.
Go ahead, you go with this one.
Subsection E, landscaping and sidewalk amenities to the maximum extent possible projects shall provide pedestrian-friendly amenities such as outdoor seating patios, porches, or courtyards. Site landscaping shall be maximized, large windows that open to, open to provide the experience of opening, dining, and recorage. Two pathways, sidewalks, designed to connect the street to rear parking areas or the adjacent developments are encouraged to further the goal of providing safe pedestrian access to businesses within downtown Winter.
Period.
Businesses, period.
Period.
Businesses, okay. Subsection F, service areas, utilities, and equipment services. In loading areas and mechanic equipment utilities shall be untrusive or sufficiently screened so that they are not visible from streets or primary public open spaces, shall incorporate effective techniques for noise buffering from adjacent users. Subsection G, vehicle and pedestrian features, vehicle, pedestrian, and bicycle features shall be designed to promote connectivity, curb cuts shall be minimized. Subsection F, parking, to maintain a pedestrian-friendly environment, motor vehicle parking spaces should...
H.
H, I'm sorry.
H.
I can't even read my own writing. Shall be located behind or beside buildings whenever possible. Parking located directly between the buildings in the street alignment shall be discouraged. Bicycle parking, bicycle parking may be provided for auto development and shall be located as close as possible to the building entrances.
It was changed to May, wasn't it?
May, yeah.
He said May.
He said July.
Oh, did you say May?
I wrote May today. I had May written down. Any property required, so bicycle parking may establish a shared bicycle parking facility with any other property on within the same block. Subsection J, sustainable building design. It is desirable that new buildings incorporate green building techniques such as those developed by the U.S. Green Building Council to the maximum extent feasible. Section 17.50.080, approval. Site plan and design review approval shall be granted upon termination by the site, by the Planning Board if the plan meets the following objectives. The Board may impose reasonable conditions at the expense of the applicant, including performance guarantees to promote these objectives. Section A, new building construction alterations and other site modifications shall be designed to enhance the traditional downtown character of the Winter Center Business District by: Section 1, addressing the characteristics of a specific location by the proposed land used to design the building form, grading, egress points, and other aspects of the development; 2, building design that is compatible in scale materials with existing downtown, including historic structures; 3, maximizing pedestrian connectivity; 4, minimizing visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage, or other outdoor service areas viewed from public ways or residential, or other residential uses; 5, minimizing glare from headlights overspill into adjacent properties into the night sky; 6, providing accommodations for cash sharing and bicycle usage; 7, ensuring compliance with provisions of the zoning bylaw including parking and landscaping. 17.50.090... 17.50.090, Regulations. The planning board may adopt at duly noticed meetings its regulations for site plan and design review. The board may also develop and adopt guidelines for site plan and design review to support this bylaw with the approval of the town council. 17.50.100, Lapse. Site plan and design review approval which has been granted pursuant to this bylaw shall lapse within two years from the grant thereof except for good cause. 17.50.110, Appeal. Decision of the planning board shall be filed with the town clerk. Any appeal for project not subject to a public hearing shall be to the Board of Appeals. Projects granted for site plan review, design review, approval after a notice public hearing appeals shall be filed in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 17, to a Court of Confined Jurisdiction.
Does Counselor Verone want to?
I'd like to waive the reading.
But we can't waive the reading. We can't waive it, that's not a motion.
17.50.120, Special Permit Granting Authority. Where designated as SP in Section 17.12.03 Table of Use Regulations, the planning board shall act as the special permit granting authority, SPGA, in the Center Business District. When a project requires both a special permit and a site plan and design review, these reviews will be held concurrently and will follow the time schedule required by Mass. General Law's Chapter 48. 17.50.130, Process. The planning board shall act pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 48, Section 9, Special Permits. Any application for a special permit must indicate the section of the Woodrow Zonal Bylaw under which the special permit is sought and state the grounds on which it is requested. The application is to be filed with the town clerk, stamped by the town clerk including time and date, and a stamped copy submitted to the planning board by the applicant. Within 65 days from filing a completed application, a public hearing will be held by the planning board. Figured by the planning board to take action upon a special permit within 90 days of the close of the public hearing shall be deemed to be a grant of the special permit, and the town clerk shall so certify. The time limits may be extended in writing by mutual agreement between the applicant and the planning board. The planning board may seek input from other appropriate town boards and agencies and shall not take final action plan until such reviewing agency has transmitted a report or until 30 days have lapsed without receipt of a report. 17.50.140, Application Material. See Section 17.50.050, Site Plan and Design Review. Applicability for Required Materials. Requested materials are specified depending on the size of the project. The planning board may waive the submission of specific information or request additional information. 17.50.150, Relationship to Other Project Reviews. Applicants may submit a site plan that has been prepared pursuant to Chapter 17.44 if this review precedes submission to the planning board. The planning board reserves the right to request additional information, and it is not bound by prior approvals under this chapter. 17.50.160, Criteria. Subsection A, Special Permits may be granted by the special permit granting authority only upon its written determination that the adverse effects of the proposed project will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the Center Business District and the surrounding area or the town. Subsection B, In addition to any specific factors that may be set forth in this bylaw, determination shall include consideration of each of the following as applicable. 1. The project is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Woodrow Zoning Bylaws. 2. Community needs are served by the project. 3. The impacts of the project on the Central Business District character. 4. Vehicle or pedestrian flow and safety, including parking and loading, are suitable for the site. 5. Existing or proposed upgrades to public utilities and other municipal services will be adequate to meet the needs of the project. 6. There is a positive potential economic and fiscal impact to the town, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. Section 17.50.170, Conditions. Special permits may be granted with such reasonable conditions, safeguards, or limitations on time or use, including performance guarantees as the planning board may deem necessary to serve the purpose of this bylaw. 17.50.180, Fees. The planning board may suggest reasonable administrative fees and technical review fees for/ in the application for special permits to the town council for approval. 17.50.190, Lapse. A special permit shall lapse in two years if a substantial use of construction has not begun within the two years, except for good cause. Section 17.50.200, Rules and Regulations. The planning board shall develop rules and regulations for the administration of this section for approval by the town council. 17.5.210, Parking Requirements for the Center Business District. The following provisions are applicable with the Center Business District. A) Misused Projects. 1. For misused projects, parking requirements for residential use are: Studio in one-bedroom units, .75 space per unit; two-bedroom units, 1.25 spaces per unit. Section 2, Commercial establishments in mixed-use projects shall refer to that portion of the structure a lot developed with non-residential uses. Subsection B, Shared Parking. Notwithstanding any other parking requirements as set forth in this bylaw for individual land uses within the Center Business District, when any land or building is used for two or more distinguishable purposes, including joint or mixed-use development, the minimum total number of parking spaces required to serve the combination of all uses shall be determined in the following manner.
Oh, thank you. You're going to have to stick me and try to figure this one out. Subsection 1, Multiply the minimum parking requirements of each individual use, see Section 17.20.070, Center Business District, by the appropriate percentage as shown in the parking credit schedule chap below for each of the five designated time periods, as resulting sums from/ to as resulting sums from each vertical column. 3. The columns having the highest total values, their minimum shared parking space requirement for that combination of land use. 4. The calculation shall be reviewed and approved as part of the site plan and design review process. I'm not going to read this, there's actually a formula of different times of day, different structures, different types of things, it's impossible to read, but it was actually developed and reviewed by-
By the planning board.
By the planning board.
Just give the title.
The sections are weekday-
Midnight to midnight.
Midnight to 7:00 a.m., weekday daytime 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., weekday evening 5:00 p.m. to midnight, weekday 6:00 p.m., day/ weekend, day 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., weekend 6:00 p.m. to midnight. And there's categories for residential, office, industrial, commercial, retail, hotel, restaurant, restaurant associated with hotel, entertainment, recreation, daycare facilities, and all other uses unless documented as submitted by a registered engineer. Section-
Subsection C, Additional Reduction in Parking Requirements. Required onsite parking may be reduced by 10% if one of the onsite spaces is dedicated to use by a car share service, and an agreement with a car share service to place a vehicle at that site is provided as part of the site plan approval process. Subsection D, Fees in Lou of Parking. In the Center Business District, any commercial or mixed-use structure that is required to provide parking spaces may make payments to the Town of Woodrow in lieu of providing for all or part of the onsite required parking. Payment made to the Town of Woodrow in lieu of providing some or all of the required onsite parking spaces for a project in the Center Business District shall be allowed by right subject to the site plan and design review. A one-time fee of $2,000 per parking space is to be paid prior to the receipt of an occupancy permit. Fees in lieu of parking shall be deposited into the Town of Woodrow Downtown Parking Reserve Account to be used for expenses such as land acquisition, design, engineering services, construction costs related to adding parking spaces, improving the utilization of existing parking spaces, signage, parking management activities, or reducing the need for new parking to serve the Center Business District, such as bicycle parking and improved transit. Requests to appropriate funds out of the reserve account shall be filed with the town council. Subsection E is Required Parking, and that is Section 17.20.070, Center Business District shall govern the requirements for off-street parking.
Thank you, Counselor.
Will this be approved?
Coming from committee, there's no need for a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Can you repeat?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanited?
Abstained.
Counselor LeTiri abstained. Counsel, you weren't here when we recognized, Counselor Von Corry, the fact that the very comprehensive work that you and the planning board did in developing, improving, and changing this, and we appreciate that.
We had a rule of ordinance meeting 21st at 7:00 p.m. Most of the counselors were there, we had six counselors there, and the entire planning board was there, and it was quite a lively discussion, and it was a three-hour meeting.
Yes, again, thank you, that's a comprehensive, big step forward. Counselor, sir.
And, you know, for people who are listening to, who we just read, it may seem more cumbersome or complicated, but there's actually more understanding about, from developers and people going forward, projects going forward, and should lessen the actual time to get through the process with maintaining responsible projects as we go forward, so it's an exciting move in the forward direction.
Thank you, Counsel. Vice President.
And again, I just want to say that this wasn't just something that happened in the past few weeks, this has been going on for-
Years.
Yeah, well, the thought was going on for years, but I think it's about the past six to nine months, it's really become a topic that's been worked on, and this just wasn't done on the side of the creek. We had the Metropolitan Area Planning Council assist us, we had the U.S. Census assist us. This was professionally done, it was reviewed, it was something that was happy-hazard, just we may, you know, sometimes it looks like we go fast when we do these things at this stage, but there's been a lot of work that's occurred with a lot of independent parties looking at it all, so.
Thank you again. If we could, could we just name the planning board if you don't mind?
Yeah, I was going to just-
Yeah, go ahead. Anna Mersett, Gina Demento, Bob Carroll, Peter Roach is chairman, Vinnie Zapola, David Proctor, and Dave Staciello. If I missed anybody, I'm sorry.
Did you get Carol?
Um, Bob Carroll, I did, yeah. But professional architects and professionals in their field and dedicated to making this happen, so we appreciate all that.
They did fabulous job.
They really did, okay, thank you. So, you need to read that again or anything?
No.
Okay. And the limousine thing is still on?
Yes.
The trash ordinance review motion that I had last meeting that Counselor LeTiri postponed, I'd like to withdraw, this is my second, we'll withdraw it to second.
I will.
Thank you. And what we did in that is we sending out a reference to the rules that were applicable in Waterville, along with Steve, as a statement that's going out in Waterville. I had skipped over correspondence only because we didn't have any, but just to be official. Under, if there is no further old business, we'll move on to new business. Be there in a second. From the town manager, we moved at the council transfer $18,070 from the Sale of Land Property Fund 853 to the General Fund for the purpose of funding a special article for the library building improvements, maintenance, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion? Motion by Counselor Dover.
Let's make the motion, and Mr. President, I'd ask that we do this as an emergency motion, and we've come to find out that the existing fire panel at the library is non-functioning and needs to be repaired, and I think for safety's sake, we determine this as an emergency action.
Just as a point of order, we make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeTiri, and then your discussion.
And I'd like to amend the motion to include, to make it an emergency action where, as we've recently found out, the fire panel, fire alarm panel at the library is updated and non-functioning, has been for several months, and we need to get that repaired right away, so.
I second the amendment.
Motion's been made and seconded for amendment. The amendment is that we do it as an emergency motion. Is there any discussion on the amendment, Counselor?
Just a question as to why the sale of land account?
Because it's a land improvement type of thing, the money can come out of there.
Well, I know that it can, I know that it can come out of there, but why not somewhere else?
Tim, was there a rationale?
Actually, Counselor Demento-
I was going to just chime in.
-a few months back, and so we've created the motion based on that recommendation.
Counselor Mill?
I would prefer to see that come out of council reserve.
All right, let's go back to the amendment first, and we'll vote the amendment, then we'll get back to the discussion on the main motion. All those in favor of the amendment that this be considered an emergency, therefore it doesn't go to the finance committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
You don't want it to be considered an emergency?
I don't think so.
Okay, so it's aye to one. Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
I mean, I had spoken to the library director recently about some improvements, and we do have the sale of land account, which is for capital improvements of our properties, sell property, and then you can work on an asset with the proceeds. It's an available fund, it's a long, they're both long-term capital asset purchases which that fund is designed to be used for.
Is there any further discussion on the main motion?
Absolutely, that being the case, we have a capital, we have a capital assets fund also, and this is in a sense a capital asset, and to me, I think we've tapped that sale of land account down to, you know, I just don't see it. To me, I'd rather take the money out where I see it more often, where it hurts a little more.
You want to make an amendment?
Make an amendment.
We have a discussion on what the, why it was coming from there, so if we want to do it through an amendment, fine, if we want to do it through a-
The, so the, Counselor Mill, do you want to make an amendment that the funds come from the capital improvement as opposed to from the sale of land account?
Quite frankly, I'd rather see them come from the council reserve.
Let me hear your amendment.
I would like to make a motion that comes from council reserve.
Okay, so you would amend the motion that the source of the funds be council reserve? Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second that amendment.
Seconded by Counselor Verone. Is there any discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in-
Wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
Can I ask Tim what the balances are in each of those accounts?
So, for the sale of land, there's $478,000 in there, and in the capital stabilization, there is $400,000. And the council reserve is 150.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment, that it come from council?
I'll wait.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just as a reminder, keep in mind that council reserve is the general fund fiscal year 15 balance, that would be current year versus using the special revenue funds.
Right. Okay, so we're on the amendment that it's going to come from council reserve?
Council reserve.
Is there any further discussion on that amendment?
How much are we talking on this?
$18,070. $18,070.
$18,000?
I would prefer to, really would like to see it come out of a capital fund, it is a capital asset, it's not an operating expense, to start tapping council reserve now before we come into hurricane season, storm season, fall cleanup, snow, bottle season for next year, I'm sure we could utilize that hundred odd thousand dollars very expeditiously with those situations, so I'd like to see if it come from capital account.
At the, Counselor?
Hi, good to meet you.
Okay, so at this point, Counselor Mill?
Do you have something also, Counsel Lotterie, or?
I was just going to concur with Counsel Dovent, that I think this is a prudent use of the sale of land funds, and I think it should remain where it is.
Let me, Counsel?
I actually think it's a prudent use also, but I also think that when you take it out of Council Reserve, you think about it awful long and awful hard, and I don't like to take it from my peggy bank. So, I've got this money saved way in these other funds for what I consider to be, you know, real severe issues. We've put them there, I like to keep them there, they're almost like, you know, in a special area. When you take money out of your Council Reserve, you're, it makes you think all the time, you're doing the right thing, you're doing the right thing. I think you need the scrutiny on every budget. Not that we don't need it, everybody's for it, but to me, this, this hurts a little bit more because it's out of your operating fund, you have to think a little bit harder the next time you do it. And I think when you go to these, these capital, you know, like the sale of land, jeez, at one time, there was $2 million in it. Now you're starting to trickle that money away full along, and we still have $170,000 that hasn't been returned to us from that fund, I think, from the school, because we fronted them some...
Maybe one of them.
Whatever it turns out to be, but to me, you know, that was a fund that had a couple of million dollars in it, now we're down, you know, way below half of that. So, when you take it from your pocket, you're a little less likely to, you know, be frivolous the next time, and that's my fiscal approach to it.
Is there any discussion on the amendment to use the source of funding the Capital Reserve Fund? If not, all those...
Sorry, it's not Capital Reserve.
Was to use the Council Reserve Fund.
Counsel, I have a comment.
I wrote counsel, but I wrote council, Council Reserve Fund. Is there any discussion on that amendment, Counsel?
I, I have to concur with my Counselor Mail here, that I agree with everything he had to say.
Any further discussion on the amendment? If not, all those...
What, read the amendment again now.
That the source of the funds will be the Council Reserve Fund.
Council Reserve Fund.
As opposed to the original being the use of land. Is there any further discussion on the amendment for the source of the funds? If not, all those in favor of the source of the funds being the Council Reserve Fund, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. You want to roll, let's do a roll call.
Counsel Calhoun?
No.
Counsel Sanford?
No.
Counsel Valcory?
Yes.
Counsel Varone?
Yes.
Counsel Lotterie?
No.
Counsel Boyajin?
Yes.
Counsel Mail?
Yes.
Vice President Dovent?
No.
President Gill?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's too late. Too late.
Phil's got to read this thing all over again.
If necessary, being on the prevailing side, I will move for reconsideration of the vote. I don't think that's necessary, does the Counsel go along with each? Miss State, it's, the amendment did not, yes. Okay, all those in favor of the main motion?
Counsel President?
Yeah.
I'd like to amend the main motion at this point, that the source of funds come from the capital, what's the name, Capital Stabilization Fund instead of sale of land.
Seconded, let me...
Is that capital assets?
Capital stabilization.
Same as capital assets.
Motion by Counsel of Varone, seconded by?
Second.
Counsel Boyajin.
Boyajin, okay. Any discussion on the motion, I mean, on the amendment to take the funds from the Capital Stabilization Fund?
Mr. President, as the maker of the original motion, I'm fine with it comes from Capital Stabilization.
Yeah, is that what we want?
No.
So, hold, hold. Process is, if that's what you're comfortable with, then we will vote that amendment, and then we'll vote as amended. Okay?
Yeah.
Counsel, um, Varone made a motion seconded by Counsel Boyajin to take the funds, make the source of the funds the Capital Stabilization Fund. Is there anybody, any discussion on that?
Get the question.
Not, all those in favor of the amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous?
Wait.
Hold on.
Just, sorry, but I just want to make sure for purposes of a minute that it's Fund 964, we have a number of capital...
Which ever one it tells for me to use.
964, you got that?
964.
All those in favor of the amendment to use Fund 964, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? All those in favor of the main motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Peter? Thank you. We have a motion to instruct the Town Manager to send comments and concerns regarding the Atlantis Marina expansion to the Army Corps of Engineers on or before July 30th, 2014, or take any action relative thereto. Do I have a motion? Motion by Counsel Lotterie, seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Boyajin. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel?
Instruct the Town Manager to send comments and concerns, whose comments are concerned? We haven't discussed it.
I sent you, I sent you a draft.
Yeah, but we haven't voted on it, so I'm going to take my prerogative and put this up to the next meeting.
By putting this off to the next meeting, you in effect nullify the...
There, yeah, they won't get any notification.
So, so you, you don't want the Council to send...
A letter.
A letter to the... Okay, then, then we will have a special meeting next Monday.
But we have not even discussed what the comments...
We can discuss it right now. You got the draft, we can discuss it now, or we can have a special meeting Monday.
You missed the public comment, too.
Let me?
Yeah, we missed it.
Counsel.
There was public comment, and the comment of the public comment...
Are we sending the public's comments, are we sending our comments, are we sending the Town Manager's comments, the Planning Board's comments, the Council's comments? Whose comments are we sending? We have not done any of it, so it makes no sense.
We'll put off tonight to Monday night, we should discuss it Monday night.
We can do that. If everybody wants to have a meeting Monday night, that's fine as well. Let me just check the calendar, too. The purpose of sending out the materials to the Council was so that the Council would be prepared to have a discussion tonight. The comments that were made in public comment tonight were very much in concert with the comments that were made in the, in the draft that was sent out. The comments that came from Planning Board, verbally, Planning Board, Board of Appeals, Conservation Commission, were all the same comments that were in there.
I saw their comments.
Pardon?
Whose comments are we sending, is what I'm asking.
We're sending the comments.
They're going from the Council, that the Council should have had the first full discussion before the motion comes to us, and, and that's why I'm opposed to...
That's, that's fine, if that's what you want to do, I just want to make sure that... Monday, July 28th, there's a school committee meeting that I will leave to be here, unless... Yeah, I will go to the school committee meeting at 6:30. I hope they're not putting it in here, I hope they don't have it booked in here.
Can we discuss now?
We'll make our meeting at 7:30 on Monday. That work? Special meeting, 7:30 Monday, at which point, that letter has to go out by Tuesday. Okay, so 7:30 Monday?
The, you see school committee on...
28, it is. But we have no choice. If we don't have a meeting on Monday night, we don't have a letter going out by the 30th.
I have the calendar up, I don't see...
The school committee meeting was just called, special meeting.
Oh.
Okay, 7:30 Monday here.
I don't know, what space are you going to use?
I'm going to use this space, but the...
School, school committee.
I'm going to make sure the school committee's going to be done. They have the room booked for 6:30, but I will double-check with them that they will be done, because they, they're having a special as well. Okay, 7:30 Monday, July 28th. Okay? Okay, so that's postponed to that meeting, all right? And anything else under new business? Under appointments, Tom Schlichting's constable appointment expired, and it was an oversight, and I would like to reappoint Tom to an expiration date of June 30th, 2017. But I have an affirmation on that?
Motion.
Motion by Counsel Lotterie, seconded by Counsel Sanford.
Calhoun.
Calhoun, sorry, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? Thank you. And the next meeting, next regular meeting, is scheduled for the same night as the, the police...
Motion to waive Council Rules and...
No, I think what we're going to do is tell them to change the, fight the police...
No.
Could I have a motion to waive Council Rules 2A?
Motion.
All those, and any discussion, if not all those in favor, say aye.
President.
Closed. It's unanimous, and I will move the...
Are we just, no, 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 I'm not opposed, but are we just...
Reschedule.
Are we going to have one meeting in August?
Well...
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Why don't we do that? Because we're going to have a special?
Correct.
It's okay with me?
I'd amend the Council Rules and just...
So, we will cancel the meeting of Octo, of...
First week.
The first one.
August.
It's August 5th, we will cancel.
And midnight.
Okay, good.
Good.
This, no further business, does anybody have anything on the public comment?
Yes.
Counsel?
I do. First of all, I wouldn't do it as a motion, but I would like to ask one of the acting peoples here, if they can instruct the IT Director to send in an email to every one of the Council, all of the passwords for all of the town buildings, so that as we move from building to building, we have the opportunity to be logged on and take the information that we want.
So, you're talking about the IT, the wireless?
The wireless, yes. That would include the EB Newton School, the COA, the Cubbings, public schools, and the Town Hall, both of them there. And I would also ask that if there is a problem, that the, that the school committee authorize us to have the, the school ones also, and I would be willing, and I assume other people on the Council would also be willing, to offer the same courtesy to them as they come to our buildings. So...
And while you're asking if stuff has, where the TV is, that we pass the motion for.
That's fine, passed away. Then, what was the, I'm sorry, what were you, what did, Counsel?
Passwords.
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 Master list.
Master list.
Yeah.
Could you take care of that, Tim?
Yeah. Well, just as a thought, seeing that email's a public domain, maybe a written note would be, would be more appropriate.
All right, in response.
In response, yeah. But I'd second that if that were a motion.
It's not a motion, we know it is one. Counsel Mail?
Also, last year, I'm going to put it on the line here, Counsel Calhoun and I went off and offered gift cards to people that planted the spots in front of their house, and I've been cruising around town. Offer goes up again this year, I've been cruising around town, and I will, Counsel Delvento, there's a nice woman up the top of Yard Hill there that's got quite an operation going on the side of hers, and I've been looking around, so if you know people that have done that and planted it up, that's, that's very, very nice. And if you don't mind, I would take a couple of minutes to review what we saw yesterday when Counsel Calhoun and Counsel President Gill and myself, along with the Commissioner Alagui and Joe Dean, went to a FEMA meeting in downtown Boston for about three hours. So, for everybody that is, everybody in town should know that it is my feeling, and I believe the feeling of the rest of the Council, that the FEMA flood map issue is something of dire importance to every individual in town, and it is your own responsibility to seek that information out from your insurance agent and from your bank. There are some very tight deadlines that come into play, and if you miss these deadlines, you could affect the insurance values. There are deadlines that are coming up, the Town is watching them, out for them, the Town is working with group MAPC, the same people who did our planning on the Planning Board, working with a different group at MAPC to make sure that we are in compliance, and we are also teaming with Boston and Revere and Chelsea, I believe, to make sure that we can appeal and put our best foot forward. If you can, over the next couple of weeks, I will get up on my website all the available links that you need, but the one you can go right to now is to FEMA.org, you can put in your property, and you can see to a relatively high degree what type of area you are in. And there's a code for the zones, and the one that I don't think they clearly state is the EL, which stands for the elevation for which they will be projecting floodwater could hit. So, I believe the school zone was an EL14, which meant that at properties over 14 feet, getting an elevation certificate would be able to get reduced rates. There are many elements that go into this, including the restructuring of the Bigger Waters Act, which is getting rid of some of the subsidies. There are multiple ways that you can get insurance, but I will try to get as much of this up, the Town is going to try and get this up. The EPA, the FEMA group has three public meetings which happen in a 90-day window for Suffolk County, which means the several million of us that live and the several hundred thousand of us which are affected will have to find our way to one of three meetings to get up on this. There's grandfathering available, the people who take a proactive approach to it, there are other options such as elevation certificates, which individual areas can think about getting, but the overriding fact remains is that the Town Council nor the Town of Winthrop can be responsible for the individuals in the town, and we have to have our, the onus is on ourselves as individual property owners to make sure that we are all completely and fully aware, we are going to be setting something up. One insurance agent in town has already had a conference call with FEMA, I suggest the other insurance agents in town, either individually or collectively, through the Council President, through Joe Dean, through, through the Town Manager's Office, reach out to FEMA so that you can do a good service for your, for your clients, because it's an important issue, whether it's delayed or implemented more quickly, it's not going to go away, it's something we all have to live with, is members and owners in a coastal region, and again, it's our own responsibility individually, so I say that as Ringo would say with peace and love, and hope everyone will go out there and take a look and make sure they get the right information.
Bottom line on it is, we are not experts as a Town Council, and it's a very strong recommendation that you know that this is an issue, and that you check it out with your own insurance person, don't count on websites and so forth and so on, check it out with your own insurance person for his or her input.
The website is actually going to change on Monday, and I do have a current website and how to navigate through it, it's not as easy as just going on FEMA.com, so I will work with Counsel Mail to get that information correctly to everyone. We do have contact people, we have the phone numbers, they're very willing to speak to homeowner by phone, and I have pleaded with them, pleaded with them that out of the three meetings that are going to be scheduled in Suffolk County, that they have one here in Winthrop. So, we're still working on that, just to make it so that we can have the surrounding communities like Chelsea, East Boston, we get, come here. So, we are working on that, but as Counsel Mail said, it's very important, anyone who lives along the water will find themselves now suddenly in a flood zone, you should be proactive about it, because if you approach them and you provide yourself with a policy now, a preferred policy that you can maybe predict, you know, how much coverage you want, then you're going to be grandfathered in later on when the flood maps become permanent. So, it is something that anyone who has waterfront property should really start to pay attention to.
Any further comments? Chief?
Just, as we said earlier in the night, Atlantis Marina issue is also a matter of litigation and hands on separate issues, so you just want to be careful. I didn't call it to public. Consider a executive session on that because we have other issues that are on the same trail and track of the Army Corps of Engineers. And also, I think it's a responsibility to tell manager's office to articulate a response as it particularly and relatively addresses the violations of our policy procedures and warrants. So the town manager's office should also start to look at and draft their separate comments, so we have a timely response. And if the council then votes to add comments, then those comments then can be added after Monday night's meeting.
Right. My plan was that he would draw it and come to us, and we would, as you said, yes, we would add comments. Yes.
Will he be back?
I mean?
Will he be back?
He will be back Monday. So he's going to have to spend Monday doing it.
And should we be in executive session as chief?
No.
That stops for a couple minutes. Page, you can shoot him a quick email to get a quick decision.
All right, so Denise, when you -- with an executive session, with that standard language?
Yep.
That way it'll cover.
Okay, good idea.
I was going to say, we should really congratulate the Department of Police Department for getting that grant, that $250,000 grant. That's absolutely incredible.
Yeah, that's great.
That's wonderful, great work.
We wish, you know, the speaker is the department person on that. He secured it for this community. He would be pleased and appreciative of his efforts.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Yes, just two additional comments. I talked twice to Mr. Catali of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and he said he didn't want to hear from the city, so I assume he was being honest about that.
Yeah.
Look forward to hearing from you. On the other matter, I attended a number of meetings of the planning board, though not the last meeting. It was a thoughtful and comprehensive process, very admirable. Site review and design review is terrific, and the plan's terrific. It takes a lot of monitoring and enforcement, more so than simple zoning, when it's easy to see when there's violations. Site review, design review has to do with materials, design, appearance, the size of windows. Developers have a tendency to try to avoid their obligations, their promises, and the requirements of the site review. And the planning board of the town is going to need resource in order to, I think, monitor and force the decisions that are part of the site review process.
Thank you. Just as a matter of process, if there's no objection, we have to go back to new business. The vote on the eighteen thousand seventy was supposed to be a roll call vote. So if we could go back and just take a roll call on the motion that the town council transfer eighteen thousand seventy dollars.
Motion revert to new business?
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On the motion as previously voted, move that the town council transfer eighteen seven from the capital fund property nine sixty-four to the general fund for the purpose of funding a special article for library building improvements and maintenance. Roll call vote.
Council Callow?
Yes.
Council Sanford?
Yes.
Council Boncory?
Yes.
Council Varone?
Yes.
Council Terry?
Yes.
Council Boyage?
Yes.
Council Mail?
Yes.
Mr. President Dovin?
Yes.
President Gill?
Yes.
Thank you.
So just to reiterate on the meeting that we will have next Monday, then we are canceling the meeting that was scheduled for the following Tuesday. We will still have the meeting on the 19th, and if necessary, we'll call a special in between. If there is, I will entertain a motion by Councilor Terry to adjourn, seconded by Council Vice President Dovin. Any discussion on the motion? If all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.